All right, I'd like to call the meeting into order. And if you'd please all join me in the pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Mr. Fortrell, because we are as well, I'd ask you to do the roll call of attendance.
Dr. Christine Dawson.
Yeah.
Bill Elder is here. John Farrell, John Farrell.
Here.
Thank you. Roger Fidelli.
He's unable to attend tonight.
Lisa Hogan.
Yes, here.
Kim Henkel.
Here.
Tom Kurtz. Kevin Ostrander.
Here.
Jeff Riggi.
Here.
Christine Orr. Tim Dawkins and myself.
Thank you. First order of business, Christine, I'll turn it over to you regarding the presentations, please.
So first of all, tonight is our normal annual tenure recognition night. And we had a plan to recognize people outside and of course, all of our recognitions always have food. Don't worry, we will still have food for all the people that were being recognized. But they will come, it will get delivered right to you by a special member of the staff. So with that said, we have two of our tenure people online tonight, Tim Dawkins and Pete Modi. Congratulations on receiving tenure. And to our instructional staff, Karina Dickens, Sarah Hills, Rachel Capels, Abby Rourke, Mike St. Louis. Congratulations on your tenure. It does start this year for that. Mr. Dawkins, I think you came in to quite a few surprises this morning.
I did, yes. My, my entire office was decorated with red and blue streamers and balloons and, and other things. I had a team of, of Bulldog Elves here early this morning. I also had a plate of cookies that were left behind and some other delicious carbohydrates that I've been indulging in throughout the day. And you know, may throughout the meeting as well, so don't be surprised if you see me pop a mini cupcake into my mouth.
Mr. Modi, I think your office was decorated as well.
Yes, it was. It was really nice to come into. And Mr. Dawkins, I would, I would share my plate of cookies, but those have been gone since about 12:30 this afternoon.
Yeah, I mean, it is nice to be loved and it's nice to know that the people know what we need, when we need it. So that I have to say, if I've done anything right, it's at least people know to bring me cookies.
As always, with our first meeting of the year, it's always good, instead of a formal presentation, to really hear from our administrators and some of our directors. So we'll kind of do a popcorn piece where I will throw it one person and then you can throw it to another person. So I'll have to keep kind of going back and forth. So Mr. Modi, I'm going to have you go first, but remember, it is, it is, it does not need to be everything that happened. So you need, now that you have tenure, you need to model the appropriate way to the other administrators on how to present how the opening went for you in your building. So I will give it to you, Mr. Modi, to start.
Well, you know, like now I ask the question, if I don't, how much real trouble can I get into anymore? Mr. Huckrow, you're going next, just to prepare you since you're next to me on the screen. So I thought I'd lead with that, just so you knew it was coming. I mean, I'll be really quick, you know, on the high school, every side of things, it's just after 545 days, having 900 kids back in the building was just awesome, you know, it's, you know, there's absolutely some adjustment going on. Our kids have not socialized like that. Even socially distant and mass, they haven't socialized like that in a long time, but it just sounds like a high school again. And that's just, that's just a wonderful feeling. I was reflecting over the weekend that, you know, since March 13th, 2020, both teachers and students went from a traditional 40-minute period into kind of the flexible block thing that we did while we were in complete shutdown and then into the hybrid block and now into kind of like a traditional block. And I have, it's a lot of change in a year and a half in terms of adjusting, adjusting instructional strategies and learning strategies. And you know, I'm just really proud. I think everyone has just been doing a wonderful job. And this year, this year is just another adjustment to, you know, kids just, they're happy now that they know that, oh, wait a minute, you know, today's an A day and that means tomorrow is a B and then it's a C and then it's a D. And then what? Oh, it's A again. That's it. So you know, that's been a nice change. I think it's just, you know, just less shuffle, you know, Friday, first time we've had, you know, all the kids in the building for five days in a row since the week before marathon in March 2020. That was, yeah, there were some tired faces. They're not used to coming to school five days a week. But yeah, that, that's just been, it's been great. You know, we're going to continue to make adjustments, obviously, you know, as an example, you know, we were spending time over the last week or so, meeting with class advisors and class officers regarding things like, like homecoming, you know, student officers did some, some reach out work with their peers. You know, we know that it would be very difficult to have a meaningful homecoming dance inside, having to be socially distant and mass, you know, dances at three feet or four, six feet apart is, is not really much of a high school dance. So I'm excited. They've come up with something called a fall festival, which is going to happen right after school and kind of like the, the food truck model leading into the, the Powderpuff Game, which is going to be Friday afternoon. And then the, the football game Friday evening. And then the, the advisors and the officers are organizing an after-party event right after the football game run until about 10:30, which is going to be, you know, on the tennis courts and music and more food and refreshments. So the kids get to get, have a chance to get together and just kind of celebrate being back. But it's, you know, weather permitting, it's, it's all outside, which, which lets us be a little bit more flexible. And really, I think that's, that's what the opening comes down to, you know, trying to find ways to have meaningful experiences for the kids, both educationally and socially, you know, under, you know, obviously restrictions, but just thinking outside the box and, and working with the kids to find things that they're going to enjoy. So you know, that's all on my end of things. Mr. Huckrow.
Pete, I really was getting myself comfortable. Nice, nice job. Superintendent Nora, I think, I think you'll agree, right? Well done. So good to see everybody here. So the strangest thing happened for, for months now, I've been hearing this rumor that my secretary was going to retire and then all of a sudden today she didn't show up. And I realized that, you know, there was a little truth behind the rumor. So a big last final, I'm no longer, cannot any longer be in denial. And a big thank you to Mrs. Ballastero. Ballard opened really well, 318 students strong. We've had a great start, a super busy start. We started the first of the superintendent's conference days during the evening with our kindergarten orientation. The next day followed our classroom visitation. And we've just been, you know, moving very, very quickly since then with safety drills. We've already done an evacuation and a lockdown drill. Both were fantastically successful. Last Friday, we enjoyed an ice cream social here in the backyard and had another fantastic sunset. You know, just the geography here is spectacular for, for a nighttime sky. Tomorrow's picture day and Thursday will kick off the elementary open houses, virtual edition. So really excited about that. I'm thrilled with the, the folks and the way they've, they've launched Open Circle this year in their classrooms. You know, those that were the early adopters and then jumped in last year and those that are just getting started this year are truly embracing, you know, this new curriculum adopted by the district and we're fortunate to have it. And Anthony Kenny is a, as a coach, Janelle Sipowicz is the director of a lot of that work as well. So we, we also started on Monday with having a number of students learning remotely. And again, thanks to all the PD offered and the experience and the training, you know, our, our teachers were ready and our, and our families and students quickly, you know, adjusted to, to that model as early in the year as it was. And I think that was the thing that we all stressed, rightly so. But the teachers and the staff and the families and the, and the students, of course, you know, really have handled it so far very, very well. To, you know, typically we have a little bit of a shaky start with transportation. The first couple of days were the same, however, our Ballard buses are arriving on time, both AM and PM. And that's, that's a big thank you very much and great work to, to Fred and Pam and Marianne, all the drivers. And same with the kitchen. It's nice not to have, you know, grab and go. And we can have breakfast in the cafeteria and all those types of things. So here we are. Personally, I'm very much looking forward to meeting with all the students during their library classes as we, you know, go through a lot of, a lot of the annual DASSA trainings and talks with our kids. So I'm fortunate to be able to get Katie Chikino, our librarian, to give up some of her time so I could, I could meet with all the kids and that'll, that'll start on Monday. I think that's, I think that's probably going to be it for, for me. Off to a great year. So glad that we're, we're all here. A big welcome to Sam and Abby. Couldn't, couldn't find two, two better. So we'll get to know each other guys this year and good luck to you. Congratulations and happy seniorship too, right? That's it for me. I get to pick someone, huh? Geraldine, you're, I'm looking right at you. Geraldine Stato, it's, you're up.
You know, Mike, for some reason I knew you were going to pick me. I just knew it. So we've had a great start here at Oliver Winch Middle School. This is my very first school opening as a principal and it has been pretty exciting for me, especially because I was the person that got to watch the 700-plus kids come into the school for the first time. And I think Mr. Modi said 549 days. So I really, it was a great privilege for me to welcome them back into school. It is awesome to have them here. It is great to hear them laughing and talking and just being kids again in school. We've started the beginning of the year here with definitely a theme focused on social emotional learning. Many of the teachers are doing great activities to communicate and connect with kids and to build those relationships in many different ways to start the school year so that the kids are really able to get to know each other again and to be able to move forward with that. We are planning on a wellness day coming up on October 8th. And we've been working on that quite a bit to do all kinds of social emotional activities on that day. Mike Hammond has been working with something called the Positivity Project, bringing that to our schools to again, focus on wellness and those social emotional skills for kids. But I think the biggest event of the entire year so far of our two and a half, well, a week and a half of we've been in school, today is the day sixth graders got lockers. And Ms. Orr, that means McKenna Orr got a locker today and that is a pretty big deal. I walked down the sixth grade hallway and they were out there in small groups practicing their combination and getting in. We had to unstick a few lockers, but the kids just did great. So it's just awesome having everybody here. It's been a great start and I'm really happy that I'm the one that gets to lead this ship right now. And I guess my next person will be.
This is Stilato. That was my only text message from my daughter when she got home today was, we got lockers.
Oh, that's.
Day in sixth grade.
It's a very, very big deal in sixth grade, definitely. I guess mine, I don't see anybody else on my screen except people who have already spoken. So I guess I am going to go with Carla. I see her smiling at me. So we'll go with Carla.
Thanks, Geraldine. You know, I'm going to echo the same sentiments that you've heard from the other administrators. I am just so happy all the kids are back. You know, I miss them over the summer, but to have, to have our virtual students back this year just makes it so much sweeter. As far as opening school, I really appreciated the time this summer, the focus time, I should say, to be able to develop a plan for open.
Carla, I think we lost your sound. And now I think Carla is frozen.
They were shorthanded, but they got that building open. They did a fantastic job. We opened school with a meeting, faculty meeting, and the teachers have been working really hard along with the support staff to follow our new protocols and to welcome the kids and making them feel safe and excited to learn. Also want to thank transportation, my cafeteria crew and my building aides for going that extra mile and being patient with me and all the changes I've been, I continuously seem to make, to tweak, to make things even better. So yeah, great year. Looking forward to it. So glad the kids are here. So all is well. And let's see, Matt, are you there?
I am here.
Oh, it's all yours, buddy.
All right. I'm going to as well echo Carla's echo, you know, at Tanglewood, we've had a great opening here. We held most of the student services during the summertime. So it was really a Herculean task to get the building open and our custodial team did a great job doing that. As I think about the first week and a half here of school, the big thought that comes to me is that we have happy kids and happy kids in the building and that's the biggest thing. You know, we've got our events that we've started. We've got new staff. We've got all the mechanics of school. But they are happy to be here and they look happy. And, and for me, that's the, the biggest part that's there. We've had, you know, very successful first days. We've got picture day coming up on Wednesday. We have a hot air balloon Thursday morning. We're looking forward to that. We had an HSA meeting on last Monday with pretty much a new board and I'm really excited about them. So I'll give a shout out to them, you know, their commitment to students and faculty and staff. It's going to be a great year because they are really focused in, in the right areas of just supporting those who do the work for our students. We've done lockdown, lockout drills. Those are, those are, they're good. They were solid for the first time out. And we've had a great, a great start here. John Farrell, I was thinking about you the other day. Our dismissal times have changed a little bit in the afternoon. And so I think if you drive by around three o'clock, Tanglewood Drive will be much more open than it was last year. And so we've switched to a rolling dismissal and that's, that's been successful so far. But hopefully that will open up Tanglewood a little bit there. So that's what I have for, for Tanglewood. And I think the, the only one left then, for the most part, is Rob McGuff over at Moreau. I'll pass it on to you, Rob.
Thanks, Matt. I knew it was coming eventually. As Matt said and everybody else, we're off to a good start at Moreau. Both our UPK students and K through five students, I'll tell you, those UPK students, no matter how many times you see them on day one, it's still a really neat thing to see the, the four-year-old topping off the bus for the first time. So a really fun thing. We had a hot air balloon visit today. Thank you to the Quinn family who came over here. They're Tanglewood parents and made themselves available for us. It was really, really nice of them to do that. And we just had a beautiful morning for it. We began our safety drills last week. Still have a few more to go for the fall. We had our first HSA meeting last week as well. We began our fall fundraiser on Friday. Book fair began today and our virtual open house will be on September 30th. Slapstick Science, Dr. Quark's Notion of Motion is coming this Thursday. It's a tradition here at Moreau that I've yet to see, so I'm really excited about that and a little nervous that they might do something to the principal. Hopefully that doesn't happen. And again, kind of like what Matt said, we've changed a few things with our dismissal because of our changes in our parking lot and they have started to do a really nice difference for us. I bumped back our parent pickup a little bit closer to the bus time today and it proved to do well. So that's it for me. Thank you to everybody for a great start. And then I'll turn it back over to Christine.
Thanks, Rob. Jessica is normally also on here and she was out today. But I do know that she will, she has been working very closely with Flora Covey, our new director of personnel development. So Flora, if you want to talk about, you know, how busy your office has been in the first, and then also, you know, how we are doing in the realm of special ed.
So it has been very busy. I've actually worked really closely with all of our administrators to fill all the various vacancies we have, specifically with Jess and trying to fill all of the special education aids. That has been a, a challenge, you know, we're continuing to work through it and we're slowly getting there. I, it actually has been a pleasure to be, have a chance to go and visit all the schools. I've been meeting with all of the faculty and staff in every single building over the next couple of weeks and all the departments, really to talk about, you know, how we can support them with the various programs and resources that we have available. I've been meeting with the Faculty Association and the CSEA and to continue to strengthen that partnership in order to support all of our employees. And congrats to Sam and Abby. It's great to see you guys on the board and you are both my students, one at Ballard and one at Tanglewood. And I still remember you guys on kindergarten, on your first day of school. So it's amazing to see you guys here. Congratulations.
Great. Thanks, everyone. Thanks to the principals for joining us. These days are long, I realize. So if you do need to switch over to the, you can go right ahead and do that. We completely understand in, in these early days of the, of the, of the school year. Mr. Elder, I will turn it over to you. I know that you are planning to make a couple of comments before the first public forum.
That is correct. First of all, congratulations to Sam and Abby on behalf of the board. Welcome aboard and we look forward to working with you during this school year. We, at our last board meeting, we, we had numerous presentations, well received. I feel bad. We didn't do a good job in terms of getting signups done, but we'll improve upon that process. But that was the first time in the last several years that I've been on the board that we've had so many folks participate. And I just wanted to take the time tonight, and I'll have to do this at every future meeting, to let people understand what the board tries to do in terms of providing a community participation. So with that, I'd like to read the statement that we have. "We, as a Board of Education, have set aside 15-minute period prior to the start of the meeting and another 15-minute period at the end to hear public comments. Please know that the board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed to be a discussion with the board. Accordingly, please do not expect the board to respond to your concerns and questions that same night. This is because we take your concerns and questions seriously and want to have sufficient time to process and research issues if need be. We will, however, respond to your questions and concerns at a future meeting or have the proper staff get back to you at the appropriate time. Under state and federal privacy laws, we are unable to entertain any comments or questions about school personnel. Please know, however, that we take personnel concerns very seriously. On these matters, we would ask you to go through the appropriate administrative channels if you aren't sure of what these are. You can start with building project, building principles, or direct your questions to our superintendent. Because this is a virtual meeting, emails were sent to the superintendent's secretary and all will be read this evening. No emails were received on the topics of tonight's meetings, so there is no public forum number one." We'll now move into our action items. In the agenda and meeting minutes, items A and B.
I'm sorry, Bill.
Go ahead.
Oh, I just wanted to, to, to make sure folks that are listening understand that the, the, as Bill said, that the letters that were sent will be read at the second public forum because the way our policy is, is that the first forum is for anything that we're about to vote on. And the second forum is more broadly situated. So if you are thinking, I send in a letter and why isn't it being read? That's what that comment meant. Thank you for the interruption.
Thank you, Dr. Dawson. Again, we did receive our agenda and minutes, items A and B. Are there any comments or questions regarding our agenda? Under school business management, number I, pile agreement requirement, solar project developers explanation, that is being removed from the agenda and will be brought forth for our next meeting. The verbiage is not quite the way we want it to yet. So that has been removed.
So Bill, I think you need to make a motion. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Motion to approve consent items A and B. Be a roll call vote. Dr. Dawson.
Oh, I'll make a motion first. Motion.
Yes, thank you. Yes. And who seconded it?
Second.
Thank you. Quick. All right, roll call vote. Dr. Dawson.
Yes.
Elder, yes. Mr. Farrell.
Yes.
Mr. Fidelli is unable to attend tonight. Ms. Hogan.
Yes.
Ms. Henkel.
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz is unable to be attending. Mr. Ostrander.
Yes.
And Mr. Riggi.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Next item of business, our school business management, items C through L. Are there any comments, questions or clarification?
Just a couple of comments.
Yes, please.
The, there are two MOAs under letter J with our, with our Faculty Association. One is similar to last year where, when there is an opportunity, because we have no sub-coverage, we're looking at class coverage. It is a one-year MOA again for that. And then, Mr. Dawkins, do you mind unmuting and just giving a quick overview of the MOA for the graduate course?
Yes, so we have a trauma-informed graduate course that I'm going to talk about in my portion at the end of the meeting. So I'll save describing the course for then, but the MOA that we came up with was in response to the, the portion of the Faculty Association contract that indicates that graduate credits can be applied towards salary at $43 per credit hour earned. We wanted to make that graduate course accessible to all. We had room for 30 participants. And so we, using Essar funds, made it, had a MOA with the Faculty Association that faculty members could either choose to pay for the graduate course themselves. The cost is $1,800 and then they would be able to apply those three credits to that $43 per hour salary bump on the other end after completion. Or they could choose to have the district pay for it using Essar funds and we would cover the entire cost. We are also covering the, the cost for any of our CSEA members that are participating in that graduate course as well. And so it's a, it's a pretty simple MOA.
Thanks, Tim. That's it, Mr. Elder.
All right. Thank you very much. Is there any further comments or questions? There being none, may I have a motion to approve consent items C through L?
Motion, Kevin.
Thank you, Kevin. Second?
Second, Lisa.
Thank you, Lisa. Roll call vote. Dr. Dawson?
Yes.
Elder, yes. Mr. Farrell?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan? Lisa?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Henkel?
Yes.
Mr. Ostrander?
Yes.
And Mr. Riggi?
Yes.
Thank you. Our next item is personnel. Essar funding, item M. Comments or questions? There being none, may I have a motion to approve item M?
Motion.
Motion from Kevin. May I have a second?
Second, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff. Roll call vote. Dr. Dawson?
Yes.
Elder, yes. Mr. Farrell?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Ms. Henkel?
Yes.
Mr. Ostrander?
Yes.
And Mr. Riggi?
Yes.
Thank you. They've been approved. Under instructional personnel, items N through S. Are there any comments, questions, clarification? There being none, may I motion to approve items N through S?
Motion, Kevin.
Thank you, Kevin. Second?
Second, Jen.
Thank you, Jen. Roll call vote. Dr. Dawson?
Yes.
Elder, yes. Mr. Farrell?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Ms. Henkel?
Yes.
Mr. Ostrander?
Yes.
And Mr. Riggi?
Yes.
Thank you. Now I have nine instructional personnel items T through Z1. Is there any comments or questions?
Just a couple of comments, Mr. Elder. First, you can see, as I mentioned earlier, on letter T, we annually appoint all of our temporary aide and these are all of our appointments there for that. Many have been with us for a number of years. Also, you'll notice we have a permanent appointment into the athletic secretary. Shannon McNeil moved from guidance over to there. She's been working hard with Mr. Greif this year. And then a congratulations to Linda Gilligan. She is retiring from the district, technically effective July 1. But she's really done many years here and we wish her well in her retirement.
Very good. Thank you, Christine. Are there any further comments or questions? There being none, may I have a motion to approve consent items T through Z1?
Motion, Kevin.
Kevin, thank you. Second?
Second, Christine.
Thank you, Christine. Roll call vote. Dr. Dawson?
Yes.
Elder, yes. Mr. Farrell?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Ms. Henkel?
Yes.
Mr. Ostrander?
Yes.
Yes.
And Mr. Riggi?
Yes.
Thank you. We did receive Special Education item Z2. There are no further comments. If there are now any, yeah, there isn't any further comments or questions, may I motion to approve consent item Z2?
Motion, Kevin.
Thank you, Kevin. Second?
Second, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff. Roll call vote. Dr. Dawson?
Yes.
Elder, yes. Mr. Farrell?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Ms. Henkel?
Yes.
Mr. Osterlander?
Yes.
And Mr. Riggi?
Yes.
Thank you. We did receive Educational Items Z3 through Z5. Is there any comments or questions?
Just a couple of comments. Z3, as people had mentioned, Sam and Abigail are on the call this evening. They do not have a formal report because the principals were reporting tonight, but they will be joining us for the rest of the year, so we are happy to have them. Also for Z5, these are the first reads of these policies that were recommended by NISBA for changes and clarifications. We have procedures to update other policies, and it's been a little busy in the beginning of the year, so we did not start that rotation yet. Once we get through these, we'll be able to keep going with our other rotation on that. So that's Z3 through Z5.
Is there any further comments, questions, or clarification needed? There being none, may I have a motion to approve consent items Z3 through Z5?
Motion, Kevin.
Thank you, Kevin. May I have a second?
Second, Kim.
Thank you, Kim. Roll call vote. Dr. Dawson?
Yes.
Elder, yes. Mr. Farrell?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Ms. Henkel?
Yes.
Mr. Osterlander?
Yes.
And Mr. Riggi?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. It's proved unanimously. A couple of information items on my side of the room. Just a reminder, on October 14th, there's a combined Ed around the X School Boards Association and Saratoga County School Boards Association being held at the Queensberry unless something changes. Our vocal point will be performing, and Barbara Peace is taking donations of certain items that will be distributed to different districts via BOSIs or donations from us. Next item is that.
I just want to, sorry, just want to point out for the combined that I believe we're only sitting by school, so that way we won't be kind of mixing, and they're trying to make it in a larger recommend all protocols for social distancing, et cetera, on that. Thanks, sorry.
Okay, thank you. Two weeks ago, myself, Dr. Dawson, and John Farrell attended the NISBA Officers Academy. And I don't know, Dr. Dawson or John, would you like to make any comments regarding that?
I'll say something quick. It was a good opportunity. I think we gathered down in Latham, and there were school districts from all around the region, and just going over again, school board roles and responsibilities, which I think is always helpful, especially, and I think it really goes to what Mr. Elder was saying at the beginning of the meeting, just to help us kind of refresh on what is our role with the public, and then looking at some upcoming policy initiatives and how we can respond to them in light of what the state has put forward. So, yeah, I think it was useful.
I think so as well. It was always interesting to interact with other school districts. Okay, Christine, I will turn it over to you for your updates.
Thanks. Along the agenda, I don't know if this person is watching, but we want to welcome Jenna Curbin. She is taking over Social for Ballard, and she starts in the next few weeks. So I didn't want to miss her and welcome her, and we will see her soon at Ballard. My topic tonight, as always, is the Fort Edward-Southland Falls merger information. One of the conversations that we did have was to be able to provide information to the public even prior to the board's voting in October. A newsletter was created that states, each one, the same newsletter was given to Fort Edward residents and Southland Falls residents. And in the newsletter, on the very first page, there is a link to a thought exchange that either a community member from Southland Falls or Fort Edward can fill out. Basically, it's what information do you need to make a valid decision on voting for or against the merger? And we want to clarify, and we have about 120 people so far that have done that thought exchange. The link to that is also on our joint page there. So our meeting on Wednesday, September 22nd, is virtual because we wanted to make sure many people that wanted to see it could. There will be an opportunity to ask questions during the meeting. Mark Fessin, the interim superintendent, and myself will facilitate the discussion. The board presidents of each board will be there as well. And Tim Dawkins will be there to help us organize the questions and make sure that act as facilitator, so that way we can make sure all the questions are answered there for that. During the thought exchange, there were definitely lots of questions related to staffing and things like that, and while we'll address them in the meeting, we are inviting Flora Covey, our Director of Personnel Development, to be on the call in case there are other questions for that. So we'll spend about an hour to an hour and a half, probably, together on Wednesday night for an informational piece. Following that meeting, the very next meeting that takes place, both boards will be meeting on Wednesday, October 6. That date is actually set up by the state, so that way we are voting on the same date for that. The Board of Education on Wednesday, October 6, is simply voting to decide if you're going to take the conversation of merger to the public. And I know that we will go over this again on Wednesday, and there will be questions on that. But they are not voting whether they are for or against that. They are community members, and they would have the opportunity to do that, just like all other community members. Both boards were to say, yes, we're going to take it to the taxpayers for a vote. So the meeting on Wednesday, October 6, that will be our only agenda item. I'll answer any comments or questions from the board. They will vote on that, and then actually, we're going to go into a workshop right after that to have conversations around goal setting and things, a continuation of some of our summer work in that area. So that is where we are on the conversation of merger. I am very appreciative of the people that already put comments in the thought exchange, and as I said, we'll be monitoring that and doing and sharing some of those results on Wednesday. That's all I have tonight, Mr. Elder.
Okay, thank you, Christine.
Ms. Orr, can I just ask a follow-up question? Just in case there's a community member that's watching and maybe didn't get the newsletter for some reason, is that available on our website, and is the link to the meeting on Wednesday on our website?
Yeah, the link is on the shared website, absolutely. I will double-check if this is on there. I think it's on the shared website as well, because it's exactly the same, but I'm not positive. And then if they watch on Wednesday, the very first slide is a Q and A slide. So they'll obviously still have the opportunity to ask anything. If they didn't receive this, we will be giving a summary of, a full summary of the large packet that is online for sure.
Thank you. And they can, and anybody, just in case they don't have that shared website bookmarked, they can access that right through our website, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Dawkins?
Yeah, so as I alluded to previously, I wanted to talk quickly about our graduate course that we're offering with Essar Funds through the Vermont Higher Education Collaboration in partnership with Northeast Family Institute, and Dave Melnick, who has done presentations with us in all six of our buildings around the topic of trauma-informed instruction as part of our Mental Health Task Force that started back in the 2018-19 school year. That was one of our work groups that was established, the Trauma-Informed Work Group, and what that group decided was that that was work that really needed to happen throughout our district. The pandemic, like for many things, kind of put some of our stuff on pause. But the Essar funding that came through really has allowed us to kind of expand how we move things forward. And Dave, because he's a known entity, because he's an expert in the field, and he has relationships with folks in our district, it was really a natural partnership for us to work with him and contract with him to offer this course. So I worked with him over the summer to kind of work out the details of what this would look like. But as I said earlier, this is open to 30 of our staff members, and we are full at the moment. Actually, I'm going to probably end up having to create a waitlist. And we've already talked about potentially offering it again, either this spring or next fall. And basically, what we're doing is we're creating a group of folks within our district who are ready, kind of on the ground, to take this work and spread it throughout our building. So, you know, certainly, we had students coming to our schools that have experienced trauma. If you're aware of the ACEs study, you know that many of us have experienced trauma, and we're not even aware of it, and we're not necessarily aware of how it affects our decisions each day. And so Dave really does a nice job of making that information accessible to folks. This is an in-depth exploration of how trauma affects our students and how we, as educators, can respond to that, how we can help our students through it, how we can help them have a more rich experience here at school, and how we can serve all of our students. You know, we have that equity conversation, and this is definitely part of that equity conversation. The participants will have six, I believe it is, class days. It is a virtual instruction. Several of those days are full days, and then several of them are half-days or afternoons. And in the end, they'll be able to come together and talk about what our next steps are as a district. We'll continue to work with Dave on the next steps of that. So he's going to be with us throughout the process. It's not a one-and-done thing where he teaches the course and then moves on. So this really is a multi-year undertaking that we're engaged in, and this is really the beginning of it. And I am just super, super excited about the cross-section of folks that we have attracted to get involved in this. We have teachers, we have our mental health support folks, school psychologists, social workers. We have a support staff, classroom aides, teachers assistants, librarians, and administrators all participating in this course. So I think it's going to be really great, and I look forward to presenting on it again in the future and debriefing you all on it.
Thank you, Tim. We'll now move into the second portion, second public forum. And Tim, as I understand it, you have several emails from our community that you're going to be reading for our benefit.
That is true. Just bear with me here while I get this brought up on my screen. Okay, so I'm going to be reading these word for word as they were emailed to us. Again, these are from community members, members of our Southland Falls community. I will state their name at the beginning, and then I will read through their comments. Some of these are rather long. This first comment submitted is from Lenissa Byrne. "I am beyond disappointed that you have now gone to virtual meetings," I'm sorry, "to the school board members of Southland Falls School District. I'm beyond disappointed that you have now gone to virtual meetings, which is definitely easier for you than facing the growing group of parents who disapprove of your implementation of COVID mandates on the school population, both students and teachers. None of the COVID protocols, masks, tests, or vaccines are FDA-approved, save for the cormenati vaccine. They are only approved for emergency use authorization, EUA. Can you please raise your hand if you are already aware of this fact that 95% of the COVID protocols are not FDA-approved? Please pause for time to, for hands to be raised. It is unethical and illegal to mandate the use of an unapproved medical intervention, procedure, or device. This mandate is in direct conflict with the United States Code of Federal Regulations, Section 360BB, with some other numbers and signs after it, and quite honestly, I'm not sure exactly how to read that, which requires the wearer to be informed of the option to refuse the wearing of such quote 'device.' This code states that it is required to, quote, "to ensure that individuals to whom the product is administered are informed of the significant known and potential benefits and risks of such use and of the option to accept or refuse administration of the product," end quote. Christine Orr, have you notified your students and your staff of their right to refuse a mask, which is an unapproved medical intervention? How about their right to refuse a COVID test, which is also an unapproved medical intervention? Please pause until Christine Orr answers the question. "No, then you are in violation of the United States Code of Federal Regulations. Additionally, misrepresenting the use of a mask as being intended for antiviral protection and misrepresenting masks for use of infection prevention or reduction when they do not have FDA approval for any of these claims is a deceptive practice under the Federal Trade Commission, FTC. It is clear there is no waiver of liability under deceptive practices, even under a state of emergency. As such, forcing students and teachers to wear masks or similarly forcing use of any other non-FDA-approved medical product, like a test or a vaccine, without the wearer's consent is illegal and immoral." I just need to shift my screen here. I'm sorry. "At the Board of Ed meeting in July, you assured a handful of parents that were present that you were not considering any policies rooted in segregation, such as masking, only the unvaccinated. Yet this is clearly part of your tiered mitigation approach. Another step on this ladder is requiring only the unvaccinated to be tested regularly, whether they are teachers or high-risk athletes or whomever else. Again, it is unethical to mandate an unapproved medical test, and it is clear that the vaccinated are just as susceptible to contracting and spreading COVID as the unvaccinated. In fact, current statistics are showing that the vaccinated are even more likely to be sick in the hospital with COVID. The rationale for this discriminatory practice doesn't exist. Please cancel your mandatory testing for teachers and students immediately. The following is a testimony from Dr. Erica Scott, descendant of slaves at the hearing of Ohio Bill HB 248. Quote, "My parents, Nina and Kenneth, did what they could to stand for justice and equality during the Civil Rights Movement, so that I, when I was born in 1968, was free and had the same privileges under the law as everyone else. But a vaccine mandate will change that. Any student of history clearly sees the distinct parallels between segregation due to race and segregation due to vaccine status. Inherent in this discriminatory practice is the understanding that what is happening, COVID, will become the next battle for civil rights. Government-sanctioned discrimination based on skin color is no different from government-sanctioned discrimination based on vaccination status. The unvaccinated will become second-class citizens, just like blacks once were. During the Civil Rights Movement, blacks fought against unjust laws. Today, citizens are fighting against the tyranny of government officials and the bullying from people in their daily lives who expect them to relinquish their God-given freedoms upheld in the Constitution to the state and to obey mandates, mere words of men, which are not laws. In slavery, blacks were masked for several reasons: to dehumanize, to shame, to silence, to isolate, to punish, to emphasize otherness, and to incite fear. Blacks also had to show their papers to prove that they had freedom of movement off and on the plantations owned by their masters. How are the COVID masks, social distancing, tracking and tracing, and vaccine passports of today any different than the tools used by the oppressors of yesteryear? They aren't," end quote. Her words are powerful and true. "We all know the history of discrimination in the slavery of America and the Jews and the Holocaust. Do you recognize it happening now? Do you see what side of history you are standing on? I was incensed when I heard that recently, while boarding a bus for team travel, a Southland Falls sports team was asked by one of their vaccination status while boarding the bus, and then told that the unvaccinated were to sit at the back of the bus. Wake up. Have we forgotten Rosa Parks? This is unbelievable. We can do better than this, and we must. End your discriminatory policies and make masks, testing, and vaccines personal choice for all students and teachers now."
Thanks, Mr. Dawkins. Just a couple of points. As Bill said, you know, they'll be taking this in and listening, but a couple of things, especially at the end of the sentence there. Masks are a mandate by the state. Schools must follow mandates. And they're a mandate for students, and they're a mandate for staff, and they're a mandate for anybody that comes on campus. Until that changes, Southland Falls will be following that mandate. Testing, testing of staff, there are two options. You either show your vaccination status as a state employee, or you can opt out and not have to show your vaccination status. Choose not to do that. Choose not to tell us or let us know that you are not vaccinated, and then you must be tested weekly. Again, we have to follow this rule. It is very clear that schools are responsible for this, and we have been working on doing this in the most non-evasive way possible, and we're working with Saratoga County Health on that. Any other conversation about choice, as far as choice of testing and choice of vaccination of students, is completely that. Any other conversation about choice, as far as choice of testing and choice of vaccination of students is completely that. It is a parent choice. It is, I've said it's a parent choice for testing and for vaccination in every email that has gone out to parents. And I will continue to emphasize that in any future email. When I can give choice, that is what we will do. And that's why testing of students and vaccination of students is choice right now because we are able to do that piece. For those people that are also on the call that want to choose testing and/or vaccination, I will be sharing information with you this week because it is also your choice to opt in for testing of your students. Right now, the answer is correct, that we're only testing unvaccinated people. However, that is really what the rule states. However, we've told our staff that actually we are going to open up testing to anyone vaccinated or unvaccinated. And we have several people who are vaccinated that will be doing testing as well on that. Thanks, Mr. Dawkins.
Okay, the next public comment is from James L. Ziegler. It begins, "Miss Orr and Southland's Falls Board of Education members, in twenty nineteen, when our daughter was in fifth grade at Ballard Elementary, we came to the September Board of Ed meeting to make people aware that our middle school neighbor was riding the bus one way for ninety minutes, which we thought was excessive. At that time, Ms. Orr indicated that she and other business office personnel would ride the bus routes. We thought this was a genuine attempt to rectify a busing issue. Student Board of Education representatives also spoke up and stated that the length of time on buses would decrease. In twenty twenty, there was a twenty-five-minute window in which our middle school daughter would arrive home, two fifty-five to three twenty. We understood the extenuating circumstances and dropped the issue for the school year. Fast forward to twenty twenty-one. Now, our middle school daughter is now getting home between three twenty-nine PM and three forty-seven PM. That is with a two oh five dismissal time. After bringing our concerns to SGFCSD administration, we are again being asked to quote, 'be patient with the process,' end quote. Miss Orr, in an email stated, quote, 'I think I will make it a priority to ride the buses next week, nine twenty twenty-one, and I will ask other central office people to do the same,' end quote. I am curious to know why, year after year, SGF administrators are being asked to take the time to ride buses. Is it to verify that parents have a legitimate complaint? Making statements about having central office people ride the buses seems like an easy way to placate parents without enacting any long-lasting changes. If there is no intention of fixing the bus routes, just be honest and say that. Parents are frustrated, bus drivers are frustrated. Has one single bus driver been asked if they can make their route better? Have they been given the chance? I know last year, despite having a pickup time, my daughter's bus never showed up until my wife personally went to the bus garage. Is SGFCSD using the best mapping program available? As a Southern SGFCSD family, I know the majority of the busing frustrations are with families located in the Wilton Gansford area. Is there a reason why these middle school students can't leave directly from the middle school? I am also wondering if the Student Board of Ed representatives, who said that the length of time on buses would decrease, realize that as a middle schooler dismissal is two oh five PM, as a high schooler dismissal is at two twenty-five PM. By the time an SGFCSD bus pulls away from the high school, middle school students have already been on the bus for a half hour. I would have to agree with these representatives that the length of time spent on the bus does decrease. However, it isn't until these middles- these very middle schoolers reach high school. Last week, as dismissal time, my wife had to pick up my daughter at Oliver Lynch Middle School. This was so my daughter would be able to log into the after-school virtual drama club meeting on time because we never know what time the bus will drop her off. On social media, a gentleman who clearly opposes the merger between SGF and Fort Edward wrote, quote, "Don't forget the seventy-five-minute bus ride for some of our kids," end quote. Someone may want to let the Fort Edward residents know that the bus rides could be ninety to one hundred and five minutes in length. Before anyone says this is an attack on bus garage personnel, I would like to state that we have had very positive interactions with our bus drivers over the years. They are a dedicated group of people, Ms. Linda, Mrs. C., Mr. T., Mr. Winnie, Mr. Dave, and Mrs. Radel, to name a few. My wife is a volunteer at Ballard Elementary and for two of the last three years, she has taken the time on behalf of Ballard to go to the bus garage and recognize all the staff members for Bus Drivers Appreciation Day. We understand that bus drivers are in short supply right now. However, it seems evident that the amount of time students in the Wilton Gansford District spend on the bus is not a priority. This topic was started in twenty nineteen, pre-COVID. I respectfully ask that the SGFCSD make a more concerted effort to resolve the busing issue. As an SGFCSD family, we have four more years as middle school parents and I would like to know that you are taking our concerns seriously."
Thank you. I know that Kevin Fittrell has talked with Mr. Ziegler and I hope that he's watching right now. I do remember you even back being proactive when your children were or your child was in fifth grade for that. First and foremost, I want you to know if you are watching that I say I like to ride the buses simply because I like to see where the mistakes are happening firsthand, not because there's not a belief in what is correct. I think sometimes living it along with students for me helps me get a better picture of what needs to be changed. And so simply that's become a practice that we do. Last year, I did not do that because we did not want one extra body on the bus. And so I have to remind myself to get back into practice again this year, not just for your route, but for others. Mr. Fittrell, I don't know if you have any comments about what you're working on with the bus garage because we are taking not only this, but other routes very seriously.
Yes, thank you. I have been in touch with Fred, our transportation supervisor. And we are considering actually your recommendation about having a dedicated middle school bus as well as a dedicated high school bus, just because of the twenty minutes that you talked about. There are other ramifications for that. So it's not, you know, unfortunately, it's not as simple as that, but we are trying to work out situations to see that we can't shorten up this bus route.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next email was sent to us by three separate community members, but it was the same email. Their names are Kimberly Hoover, Jamie Sevchik, and Mackenzie Mooney, who was noted as a student of the class of twenty twenty-four. Email states, "I'm writing to you today to discuss homecoming. When my high school students received the email stating that the dance was canceled, it was just one more thing added to the list of disappointments over the past three school years. These kids have had so many experiences and events taken away from them, not just big things, but little things too. We cannot keep taking these things away from them. I cannot understand why it is not okay to have a homecoming dance this year when you held the marathon dance last year as well as the prom without incident. The events required masking and testing prior, but they went on. Marathon was outside, but you still made it happen. Why can't you require testing and masking for homecoming? I know that my kids, as well as their friends, would be perfectly happy to have to be tested prior and/or wear masks at the dance. You could even have the dance open to vaccinated students only. Some school districts in the area have either already held homecoming or plan to in the coming weeks. Some of them have plans to hold the dance outdoors under a tent while others inside their gyms. All of these same students will be packed into the bleachers at the football games without masks because it is outside. The current seven-day rolling positivity is three point six percent. This is lower than when the school year started. COVID is not going away. However, we cannot keep letting our kids down. They need a normal school year with all of the sports, clubs, dances, and events. They need this. Please let the dance happen, this and future ones. The kids need to return to a normal life. If masking is fine for them to be in school, why can it not be acceptable for a dance? Thank you for your time."
Thank you, Mr. Dawkins. I will forward these and will make sure we put these on to Mr. Modi. I do know in his opening presentation, he mentioned working with students on various activities for that. I can tell you that we absolutely are not trying to make any activities vaccination only. We're trying to keep things open to all, all means all, all students regardless of their status. The however is, the testing piece could come into play, especially as we get into winter and spring for that. So I will be sure that Mr. Modi sends out to all students and all families his updated plans for activities for the fall for students because I know he completely agrees with you and I completely agree with you that we want as many activities as possible for our students.
Okay, this next contact is from Tiara Antonovich and Paul Antonovich, who are parents of a student at Ballard. And it begins, "I have a question that I would like asked at the Board of Ed meeting tonight. It is in regards to the email sent by Christine Orr on nine seventeen twenty twenty-one, specifically the section of the email about COVID testing. As a parent, I am interested in signing my son up for the weekly screening. But first, I want them to confirm it is just the swab in the mouth or right inside of the nose and not the invasive nose swab used in the earlier days of COVID. Secondly, I want to understand how the weekly results will be used. I would expect there will be a direct correlation between the results and the COVID restrictions we see at the school. Can they elaborate on that? Will we no longer be focusing on the community numbers and drive our actions based on the individual school results? I would only sign my son up for testing if there was a direct correlation between the results and the restrictions. Also, if a child tests positive during a screening, what is the protocol? How does this impact that child, his teacher, his busmates, his classmates, et cetera? Thanks."
On Wednesday of this week, all final touches will go out to families on screening, testing. We actually have two types of testing going on this year that I have shared with family members. And it's all part of our tier mitigation strategy. And really, the testing is the most specific as far as what we aim to do with our students. Again, it is choice of the parents. No one is going to be screened tested unless there is a parent choice. Obviously athletics, we've been doing screening testing for that. I am going to share a quick video with you, having seen this, to show. This will also be in the topics on Wednesday. Mr. Dawkins, can you give me a thumbs up if you can see the video? Okay, hopefully you can hear it as well. It's very quick. But it will show to the type of testing, which is on the cheek.
How are you feeling today?
Good.
Good? All right, perfect. Do you have any symptoms at all?
No.
No? Okay, perfect. So we're looking for headaches, fever, anything like that, sore throat, okay? All right. So today you're going to swab your cheek instead of your teeth. What you're going to do is you're going to take the swab, you're going to move it around, trying to stay away from your teeth of the side of your cheek with the saliva pool. Five seconds on one side and then switch it to the other side, okay? Then you're going to stick it back into the tube and you're going to tighten the cap and set it back down, okay? All right, perfect. So you're going to open it right here at the side. And you can open it all the way up just like this if you want. That way you can set it back down here. Good. Go back to that. There you go. Clear your mouth down. Open the cap. Stick it right inside and then screw it on nice and tight. And you can put it right back into that package. Perfect.
So that's just a quick little video. You'll be able to see it again. You'll see that it is in your side cheek. Another question that was asked of me in that public comment was what we were doing with the data. And my quick answer is right now, I can't answer that because it's not only about the data, it's also about how many people do this. If only a few parents sign up, then we may not be able to use the data. If many parents sign up, we may be able to do that as part of our mitigation strategies and work with our county on these things for that. So that there's more to come on that because I do understand you want to do this for a purpose. For me, the purpose is I want to keep the doors open. So if I can be proactive at any time and nip the positives before they spread it in the classroom, that's the reason why we're doing this. We have a second type of testing, which we've already started doing, which is diagnostic testing. And one of the pain of last year's rules or that when you had symptoms, you had to go to your doctor and you had to make appointments to be tested and then you had to wait for those results. And so students were starting to feel better and yet they still couldn't return to school. Right now, we're using our Binax test, which is our rapid test. And if parents choose and they give permission, our nurse will be able to give a rapid test right in the nurse's office with a parent right there. Because the child is sick, they do get sent home. They will still have to take a PCR, which could be anywhere. They don't necessarily have to go to their doctor. But in the future, we'll be using that same test and those results come back twenty-four hours after the fact. I think that while screening, this question was about screening and I completely understand. People have that concern and it's completely a choice, just like diagnostic is. But I think that the diagnostics should help families. We want to get kids back to school faster and we're hoping that these practices do that. I'm not sure if I answered that parent's every question. And if he is listening right now, my hope is after Wednesday, you get all of the information that I have as of this moment to you. And I'm happy to take any emails on the subject. You do not need to wait to the next board meeting. Thanks.
And this is our final submitted comment for the evening. And this is Amy Titangelo and it starts, "Hi, I'm Amy Titangelo with a son at Ballard. I asked about mask breaks a few times since the back-to-school plan has been rolled out. Nobody has answered my question. What is the school district guidance on mask breaks? As far as I know, masks have been required unless outside or eating at your desk or lunch. This is not acceptable. There needs to be mask breaks regardless of vaccination status. Thank you for reading my comments and question."
So because this is an elementary parent, I'm going to respond in terms of the elementary school. We are confident that all of our students at the elementary school are not vaccinated. And so we have to follow the rules that the Departments of Health have set up for that. We are definitely encouraging our teachers to take students outside often, whether it's for breaks, for gym class, for other classes, for reading time, so we can have multiple mask breaks during the day because outside masks are not required. In the classroom, they need to, students need to be six feet apart to be unmasked. And so logistically, we have to make sure that's happening. And it also has to, can only be up to fifteen minutes. If they are within six feet for less than, for more than fifteen minutes, the possibility of quarantine increases and we're trying to really mitigate that so we get the most students in the building as possible for that. With that said, we also talk about heat with our teachers and we say when it's hot, they need breaks. And we're not going to stop doing that for that component. We've encouraged people to reach out to the building principals if they feel like their student's not getting enough breaks and we can directly talk to those teachers. So this is Ballard. So I will be sharing this information with Mr. Huckrow so he can remind his staff as well. But I know that the principals have been, being the common theme of it is necessary and we want that to happen. So my hope is at some point, we'll feel more confident that those are occurring throughout the district. That was last one, Mr. Dawkins.
That was the last one.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dawkins. And for all the members that submitted comments, we thank you for your comments and questions. And now we'll move on to next part of our agenda, which is board discussion. Dr. Dawson, do you have anything?
I just want to echo what you were just saying, Mr. Elder, that as board members, I think we're all grateful for the feedback and the questions we get from the community. I also want to make sure people know that if you are more comfortable just writing in by email, we all read those comments. So they absolutely drive our thinking and, you know, I think we're all very committed, as Ms. Orr said, to the, to the health and well-being of our students here. I also just wanted to make a quick comment that some of our high school students have been involved, heavily involved in a leadership role in creating a teen center at the Moreau Community Center. And that actually opens, from what I understand, on this Tuesday. And it will be open after school for teens in the district until seven PM. So it's the bulldog zone. And kudos to the, to the students who were in leadership positions on that. And I hope that parents that are on this call will, will look into it and, and check it out. Thanks, Mr. Elder.
Thank you, Dr. Dawson. It's very interesting. From my side of the room, just a couple of things. At our board workshop this past summer, we, we did discuss reviewing the Superintendent's Evaluation Forum and the Board of Education's Evaluation Forum and to come forth with any thoughts regarding some of those questions or changes. and to come forth with any thoughts regarding some of those questions or changes we'd like to make. So if you have any of those thoughts, if you could prepare them and send them forward, I'd appreciate it. In addition, you saw last week that we've created a Board of Education handbook, and I'd appreciate any comments, questions, changes, and updates to that when you get an opportunity to read it. Thank you. Mr. Farrell?
I I guess I just want to add that I appreciate everything that the faculty and staff have been doing, as this, it's been still a challenge to deal with all the changes and taking on a full school now and all the mandates and expectations. I just want to say thank you for all your hard work, and I appreciate all your efforts.
Ms. Hogan?
No, thank you. Nothing for me tonight.
Okay, Ms. Henkel?
No, I don't have anything. Thanks.
Okay. Mr. Osterlander?
No, I think John and and everybody else is pretty much in what Christine said. Kind of like, put it all up there. We're all fortunate that how hard work and our staff is and as well as our students, what they're going through. So just hang in there and we'll get through it. Okay.
Thank you, Kevin. Mr. Riggi?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. We do have to adjourn to executive session regarding a contract contracts and personnel items. Having said that, may I have a motion to adjourn to executive session?
Motion, Kevin.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jeff. Need to do a roll call vote. Dr. Dawson?
Yes.
Elder, yes. Mr. Farrell?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Ms. Henkel?
Yes.
Mr. Osterlander?
Yes.
And Mr. Riggi?
Yes.
Thank you. We need to leave this meeting and go into the executive session meeting.
For those of you that are watching online, I am going to pause the recording and stop the live streaming. The only thing that we will be doing at the the motion to adjourn, the board will come back to this link to adjourn the meeting. So you know, that will be all that happens. Students, you do not need to stay on or do anything else. Hopefully, you don't have too much homework. We appreciate you coming in tonight. Thanks.